To call tonight's meeting in order of the Shenandoah County School Board December 11, 2025. Before we get started, one obvious note, Chairman Barlow is not here at the moment. He's currently the school board representative for a legal matter, so we hope that he'll be joining us as soon as possible. And with that out of the way, Dr. Shepherd, can I get a recommendation for closed session?
Certainly. I recommend that the school board of Shenandoah County convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of several employees of the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A14, and to have a briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7.
Thank you. Is there any motion to that effect?
I move that the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of several employees of Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711-A14, and to have a briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation and of or litigating posture of Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711-A7.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Carlinio. All those in favor of entering closed session, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. The motion to enter closed session passes by five nothing vote, and we hope to be back by six o'clock.
Again, I just want to let you know, we appreciate your patience. We were talking about things that are extremely important. We weren't packing their feet, talking about Christmas presents or things. So, we appreciate your patience and apologize for that. But, believe me, it was important, so I know you'll understand. I'd like to reconvene in open session, so can I have a motion to do exactly that?
I move to reconvene in open session.
Thank you, Mr. Gutschall, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rickert, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Please have it. All right, let me read the following statement about our closed meeting and its certification. The Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. All such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening at the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds as a certified uncalled. Cheryl, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Streep.
ISO certified.
Ms. Carlinia.
ISO certified.
Mr. Betchall.
ISO certified.
Mr. Vance.
ISO certified.
Mr. Rickert.
ISO certified.
And Mr. Garwin.
ISO certified. This evening, Mr. Rickert is going to bring the invocation, I guess you're going to bring it, right? And then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. I'd like to invite my pastor from my church forward to give the invocation.
I'll face you all earlier than you.
Whatever's comfortable for you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, in the mighty and masterless name of Jesus, we come to you tonight and we thank you for this opportunity to invite you into these affairs. I ask you, Father, that you would give us eyes to see and ears to hear your counsel concerning everything. We pray, Lord, that you would give us eyes to see and ears to hear the counsel of the adversary. Reveal any hidden agendas, keep our minds and our hearts on the right thing, the kids, the teachers, and the staff. We ask you, Lord, that you would lead us, guide us, and direct us in all that we do and say here tonight, so that when we leave this place, we will say, "To God be the glory." In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have seen the agenda items as of last week, so we should be familiar. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been developed?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rickert, for that. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Carlinia. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, non-opposed? Thank you. And now, the fun of the evening, recognitions.
It's my favorite time of the school board meeting. So, Ms. Barrettski, would you like to come forward and talk about your athletic trainer?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to thank you for having us here tonight and recognizing the success of both students and staff. Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Mackenzie Enterline, our athletic trainer. She's been recognized as the 2026 VATA's Vito Curriello Secondary Schools Athletic Trainer of the Year. So, in the entire state, she is the chosen recipient. Great accomplishment. She's being honored and recognized for her service and contribution to the profession of athletic training. In Central, we're so fortunate to have her as athletic trainer, as she's always going above and beyond for students. At Central, there are many students here tonight to support her, as well as students collegiately. They come and work with her throughout the entire year. So, she has a lot of knowledge and we are very grateful. We're very proud of her, and without a doubt, she deserves this honor. And our athletic director, Carrie Keyes, is going to speak as well.
Just a few things that makes her special to me. My first year as AD, and two occasions already this season, one in football and one during basketball, we've had student athletes have their kneecap completely popped out and hanging on the side of their leg. And she just, without any issues at all, just got them fixed up really quickly, never panicked, and did a tremendous job. So, we see that type of thing every day. But what really makes her special is how she builds relationships with our student athletes. We probably have a dozen of our student athletes back here to support her as well. But anytime you go by her office, they're in there. She does her athletic trainer club, and it's just a lot of participation with that. So, truly, I think that's what makes her special, and she deserves this tremendously.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lennox, Stowe Mall Jackson High School, he has a few recognitions this evening.
Good evening, board, Chairman Bartlow, Dr. Shepherd. Also, I want to thank Chairman Bartlow and Mr. Gutschall for your service over the years and support from the Southern Campus. It's been tremendous, and we appreciate all of that. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing some of our FFA students in the forestry contest that they competed in at the State Fair. And one of our FFA advisors, Mr. Dylan Dawson, will speak a bit more to that.
Hello. Thank you all for having us here tonight. It is my pleasure to introduce these fine young men over here. I'm going to start off with our senior right here, Mr. Darren Kivler. He's my right-hand man in FFA. He was so good at State Fair last year and did the, one of the tractors operators, that this year, he decided to go and win the small engine. So, I'm very proud of him and wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors. Over here in the orange, we have our Forestry Field Day team. We have Kate Belier, we have Penn Wilkinson, Justin Green, and Luke E. Step. They finished third overall in the state this year in the Forestry Field Day competition, which includes water accuracy, log throw, log throw, two-man saw, or the crosscut saw, and the bow saw. So, we put them on a strict dietary and weightlifting regimen, so that next year, we're going to bring home first place. That's the goal. So, we got third this year, we're going to get first next year. So, thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, multiple.
All right, next I have the opportunity to introduce our boys' cross-country team. They medal at the, they finished third in the state race this year. And we also have Marcus Bowe, who was a medalist, the first time in a long time. And I have Coach Clannahan here to speak a little bit more on their successes this year.
Goals. You guys set goals for us as educators and coaches. While these young men set a goal a year ago, they placed fifth. This year, they placed third. But not only did they place goals for that, they've set a goal to finish for, at least medal or place in every meet they've attended. And they did that. They medaled or won. They were district champions, they were regional champions, and finished third at the state meet. And they had medalists in every single invitational they went to. And that is something... And that is something, they are brothers, and I could not be prouder. But the biggest thing I want to talk about is they are students first. Their overall GPA combined is a three, 3.7 combined. There's 20-some young men standing there, and you take their average GPA together, it's a 3.7. And that is outstanding, and I couldn't be prouder of them being students first. And that if they have to miss, it's because of academics first. They are students first, and then they are athletes. But we will take them anywhere. And they are already goals set for next year. But, gentlemen, I'm very proud of you. Coach Martin, where are you at? Coach Martin's over there. He's, Daniel stepped up. Daniel had to be on paternity leave our first month, so we have a new addition to our family, a little girl. But Marcus Bowley was our team leader. Marcus is hiding back there. But he did, he is our first gentleman to hit the podium since 1991. So, it's been a long drive run for us, but we will take it and keep running with it. And while I'm standing up here, Rams, Glendar was tough on us back in November. And I'm going to say this, give 'em heck on Saturday. Obviously, being a very light lady, but give Glendar heck for us. Don't let him be like, "Let's go."
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Ms. Foltz from Strasburg High School.
Whatever you want. Mr. Fisher, you're in charge. Chairman Barlow, Dr. Shepherd, members of the board, it's always a pleasure to come before you to recognize our students at Strasburg High School and their accomplishments, as well as our coaches and advisors. I'd first like to call Mr. Brian Fisher, FFA advisor and agriculture teacher, to the podium to recognize an outstanding team that we have here at Strasburg High School.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We came to recognize three of our soil judging teams from Strasburg High School. On Tuesday, November 4th, we traveled to Broadway High School to compete in the Virginia Soils and Land Judging Contest. For this contest, students must determine soil factors such as texture, color, permeability, calculate slope and erosion. Once they've made these determinations, they have to evaluate what the land is best suited for, such as septic tanks, building foundations, or agricultural use. Each member must evaluate four soil pits and field designations. All three scores from the team make up the total score, and then students can place individually and overall as a team. Before I talk about the kids, I'd like to recognize Mr. Stephen White. Mr. White, will you stand up? Mr. White has helped me for the past four years coaching the soils team. Without his knowledge and hard work, we, these kids wouldn't be where they were. We've gone from having state winners to now we've been national winners and placing individually nationally, and you'll see here in a second, win three state-winning teams this year. So, we really appreciate all the work that Mr. White does for this school and these students. So, for the junior FFA team, we only had one student that could make it tonight. But they placed first in the junior contest out of seven teams. Mackenzie Weimer, she's not here. She placed, she was third high individual. Allison Moxley was second high individual. And Sierra Steringer, who is also not here, she's a basketball game, she was high individual overall. So, on my right, the 4H team, they placed first overall, and they get to compete. They will move on to the national contest in Oklahoma in May. Carson Stern was fourth high individual. Dalton Morris, third high individual. William Welch, second high individual. And then Gavin Top Gun Glenn, was high individual. And then the last we've got on this side is our FFA, senior FFA team, who also placed first and qualified for the national contest. Gatlin Strostenhader, the tallest one there, he was 12th high individual. Mia was seventh high individual. Piper was second high individual. And Olivia, she was high individual overall. So, I do want to thank you all for your support, as well as Ms. Foltz. She's a tremendous supporter at our school, and she's the reason that we get to do all this stuff and work with these great kids and put them in, hopefully put them in agriculture careers eventually. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Hopkins from Triplett Tech.
Dr. Shepherd, I actually have a few more recognitions if you don't mind.
At this time, I would like to call our head coach of cross-country, Ms. Brittany Coover, to come forward to recognize our girls' cross-country team, as well as a boy, a young man, who finished in the top of the cross-country meet at the states as well.
Hello, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present the top seven athletes from the Strasburg High School Girls' Varsity Cross Country Team. Many of our athletes are extending their talents into winter sports teams, and so they could not be here tonight because they are either practicing or they are playing basketball right now. So, for the girls' cross-country team, I do have Piper Dellinger. Emily Gurrell, Hannah Logan, Addison Jones, Kyra Gordon, Emily Hammerick, and Bailey Walker, as well as one of the members of our boys' varsity cross-country team, Connor Nicholson, who is also playing basketball tonight. This year, the girls' varsity cross-country team were the Shenandoah County Champions, bull run district runner-up, and placed third in the Region 2B meet. We actually tied with Fort Defiance and had to go to our sixth runner to go to tiebreaker, which doesn't happen quite as often as you would think. This qualified the team for the VHSL Class 2 Championship Meet on November 8th, where the team placed fifth overall. Sophomore Piper Dellinger was Shenandoah County Female Runner of the Year, Bull Run District Female Runner of the Year, Region 2B Female Runner-Up, and placed sixth place overall at the VHSL Class 2 State Championship, earning her all-state recognition. For the boys' varsity cross-country team, freshman Connor Nicholson received all bull run district recognition, placing eighth at the bull run district meet. All Region 2B recognition, placing fifth at the Region 2B meet, which also placed him in the top individual runners advancing to the VHSL Class 2 State Championship. There, he placed 12th overall, making him a state medalist. And that's my team. At this time, I would like to recognize our competition cheer team. Our competition cheer team finished as the bull run district and the region 2B champions. They also finished as third place at the 2025 VHSL Class 1 and Class 2 State Competition. Finishing with district, first-team district, we have Mackenzie Jenkins. She was also the Bull Run District Cheerleader of the Year, Mackenzie. Also receiving first-team district honors, Elizabeth Seelock and Elizabeth Cadel. Receiving second-team all-district honors, Alexis Bevins, Olivia Fisher, and Alyssa Landman. And then finishing with all-region cheer recognition, first-team Mackenzie Jenkins. Again, she was the Region 2B Cheerleader of the Year. Elizabeth Seelock was first-team, and Olivia Fisher. And receiving second-team all-region cheer recognition, Alexis Bevins, Elizabeth Cadel, and Alyssa Landman. And they, we are still waiting for our all-state recognition. I'd like to recognize head coach Beth McChesney and assistant coaches Allison Varley and Marissa Varley. And they are just going to recognize the cheer members that we have with us this evening, because not all could be with us. So, we have Olivia Fisher, Mackenzie Jenkins, Alyssa Landman, Elizabeth Cadel, Riley Robinson, and Gabby Reinhardt.
Congratulations, girls.
Thank you, Ms. Foltz.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Hopkins from Triplett Tech.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and the members of the school board. I'm proud to share that Triplett Tech students competed in the Skills USA State Fair Championship on September 30th, just outside of Richmond, and several of our students achieved outstanding results in their respective trade areas. In carpentry, represented by June Schlick and Noah Barnett, both students demonstrated exceptional craftsmanship, attention to detail, and problem-solving skills to build a gorgeous stool that we all had to fight over to take home, actually. Their success also reflects the guidance and the expertise of their instructor, Mr. Philip Rissman. Unfortunately, our auto body teacher and student couldn't be here, but Jaden Pangol received first place in his competition in collision repair and refinishing industry. And his preparation and growth have been supported by his instructor, Mr. Graham. And we do have Darren Kibler with us, just racking up the awards. He participated in the electrical construction wiring competition, which is a highly demanding event requiring accuracy, safety knowledge, and advanced electrical wiring competencies. And his achievement highlights the instruction and support of Mr. Davian Stevens, who wasn't able to be with us. So, I was able to go with the students to the Skills USA competition, and I really do feel like I was the real winner, because on the way home, I got to drive a van full of HVAC boys. And the number of times I heard "six, seven," it's too high to count. So, it was actually a really cool experience to watch a lot of our students get to demonstrate what they've been practicing all semester and all year. And we really swept a ton of categories. This is just a small representation, but we brought home a lot of awards. And so, Triplett Tech is a program and a school to be feared at competitions, because we really sweep most categories. So, we're very proud of them.
And finally, I would like to recognize the service of two school board members who will be going off the board here December 31st, Mr. Cal Gutschall and Mr. Dennis Barlow. Mr. Gutschall was a school board member from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. He will be working with us in a different capacity as a board supervisor, so congratulations with that. And he was school board vice chairman from January 2nd, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. And then, Mr. Dennis Barlow, thank you for your service, and we're looking forward to your participating in the school community as a volunteer for the next many years. He served on the school board also from January 1st of 2022 through December 31st of 2025. He was a school board vice chair from January 3rd, 2022 to December 31st, 2023. And then the school board chair from December, from January 2nd, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. So, thank you both for your service. And we have a small gift as a token of our appreciation.
Speech.
Robert's Rules book.
Would you guys like a photo? Judge.
Where's the picture, Nate? Where's the picture person?
Door between two roses.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that the first time?
I don't think so.
Yeah. I assume that you, as I, will have something to say during school board member comments, so the crowd will even be smaller at that time.
Yeah.
Hang in there, Co.
Your only hope.
I'm told that we don't have any speakers who've signed up yet. Is that correct? Wow. I thought you were going to say one, but you're giving me the thumbs up. I don't have to read that long. This, nevermind. That's good. But those are good recognitions. I mean, those, those kids are amazing. As with the agenda items, there have been a number of consent items that have been made available to us, and I wonder if we can get a motion to approve those consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rickert. A second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carlinia. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, non-opposed? And so, we're moving into the instructional agenda. And Jen, I was looking for you. There you are. Okay, good.
I saw that timer pop up. Does that mean I only have three minutes?
We'll give you six.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Barlow, board members, Dr. Shepherd. This evening, we have a video that we would like to share with you. As we've been working through this semester, we've been trying to highlight some of our schools and the work that they've been doing. If you remember, a couple months ago, Ms. Stone came and presented about some of the work that she's doing at Ashby Lee. And so, today, we would like to highlight some of the work that Dr. Noonan is doing at North Fork. This initiative started out with the thought process that we would be able to use some of the highlights and some of the leadership that Dr. Noonan has been working and some of the leadership that Dr. Noonan has been working on as a resource for some of our other administrators in the division or any new administrators that might be coming down the pike. But as we started on this journey with Dr. Noonan, we realized real quickly that there was a lot to highlight. And so it ended up turning into three videos. But this evening, we have the first video that we would like to share with you. And it really does coincide with the efforts that we are making in the instructional department with the tiers of support that we're offering to our schools and the things that she's doing. Dr. Noonan has worked over the last several years on visible learning. She's gotten several more grants over the years and has really put a lot of effort and work into it with her staff. And she's to be commended for all of that work. She did come this evening so that if you have any questions, we can ask her after the video. But I think that we're ready to watch the video now. Principal at North Fork Middle School in Shenzoah County, Virginia.
So thinking back to the journey of when I first came here as principal to where we've been now, it has been, it has been a long journey because this is going on year eight of being principal at North Fork. Wherever you start out, you're not stuck there, right? It's about putting it, putting the work in, having the drive, to see it grow slowly but steadily. Because I've told people, I've seen at conferences and road conferences with these turnaround, these principals that are like turnaround principals, turnaround schools, and it comes to, to school and, and you know, it's, it's four different in a year, you know, it's a turnaround school. That's what I mean. I am methodical and analytical and I can't, I'm, I'm not quick like that. It'd be nice if I was. But I knew it was going to be a journey, but that to me is the fun and the joy of it. And to know that you, as long as you're making progress, and sometimes there are setbacks, but you don't have to go from point A to point Z. You can go from point A to point C, to point F, and keep going in the right direction. So we are generals. And our, our mission is to be a star general. And the way that we kind of tell the story around that is that there are three main stars in the middle that represent general pride, general drive, and general voice. And when we think about, you know, generals in the army, it's how we relate those things, that they have pride over their troops. They have pride of each other, that they keep things looking nice and tidy. And that's how we want, in our school, we want to be taking care of each other, taking care of ourselves, and taking care of our building. Generals are obviously motivated and driven. And general drive is about having that academic motivation and resistance and perseverance. And generals are leaders and they use their voice. And general voice is all about using your own voice to make a positive difference in the community. And then the two stars on the end are supposed to represent self-selected characteristics that you want to work on or you want to better yourself in. And we've had those, those three, general drive, pride, and voice for years. But when we started to work towards becoming a visible learning school, in one of our workshops, we were working as a staff to develop learning dispositions for our school. So these are going to be agreed upon attitudes or behaviors that all learners in the school that we wanted to promote and cultivate. And we worked with staff and sorted through a whole bunch and did the gallery walk, put stars on which ones that we liked best. And then from there, we worked with the structural leadership team and kind of started to narrow down and what matched with what we were, are doing. And, and in the end result, came up with, we actually originally started with five dispositions. But as we started to think about it and work through it, we narrowed those five down to three that tied back to general pride, drive, and voice. So attitudes or, or behaviors about learning these dispositions are cooperation, working together to, towards a common goal, which ties back to general pride, perseverance. We keep going when it's tough or difficult, which ties back to general drive, and taking ownership of your, of your learning. Being in charge of your own learning journey, which ties back to general voice. I think the number one ultimate way that you get by is by modeling. Every day, day in and day out, you, you are constantly modeling the things that you say or the things that you say that you want to see. And that is extremely important. But I think it is very important to get the buy-in of the staff. And another way to do that is to have those teacher leaders that, that see the vision, believe in the vision, and can be the ones to also kind of rally the troops. Because we, we want to have credibility as leaders, and of course, that's necessary. But there's a level of credibility that I can never have because I'm not day in and day out in the classroom, 90 minutes, three quarters a day, that a teacher leader who truly believes in the vision has that credibility and then can help gather that buy-in. But it can't stop there. I've always believed that it, it's like, why do we post learning intentions? And why do we communicate those to our students? Because it shouldn't be a secret from them. Like what we, how success should look like for them shouldn't be a secret. So the vision and the mission also shouldn't be a secret from them. So they should be just as much a part of what we're building and what we talk about on a daily basis, which is why we have positive referrals that reinforce general pride, drive, and voice, which is why we have stamps that have cooperation, perseverance, and taking ownership that when we notice this thing, which is why we do walkthroughs. We're asking them about their learning intentions this year. We're asking them about learning dispositions because it's a vision for everybody, not just for community members, not just for the division and the teachers, but ultimately, we're all here for the students anyway. So our mission is their mission and our vision is their vision. At the heart of visible learning is really that we get our learners to a level where, where we as teachers are seeing learning through the eyes of our students. And our students are seeing themselves as their own teachers and able to teach others. There is a ton that goes with and into visible learning. But what we've really focused on, for visible learning for, for our school, we emphasize three characteristics. The visible learners know what, why, and how they're learning. They know what their learning intentions are, and they know their success criteria. That they are using their success criteria to monitor their own progress so they can, they can talk about, this is where I'm at in relation to the success criteria. These are what my next steps are. And then that they can also use the success criteria to seek feedback. So if I'm stuck right here, is it because I just haven't progressed enough? Or is it because I've hit a barrier? And I can go to the teacher and ask for specific, specific feedback. And then lastly, that they can be their own teachers and teach others where they have ultimate ownership of their own learning journey to the point where they can take it to the next level. Everything that we do throughout the year, every faculty meeting, every impact snapshot, which is a little instructional newsletter that I send out every Sunday, every walkthrough, instructional rounds, which is completely teacher-led and facilitated, all of those tie back to those core things that we're working towards and we want to see. At grade level, meetings, planning meetings every week, those conversations are coming, coming back up. So that it's not just here, this is it, and here's compliance, and go and write it on your board, and you have your learning intentions and success criteria. Good job, great. Like every week, we will pull a random student from every teacher's classroom and we'll ask them questions about their learning. So the, so it's not evaluative of what the teacher's doing, but it's giving us information and data and saying, this is what, when we ask our students, what are you learning today in class? This is what we're saying. When we ask them, how could you use your success criteria to, to help you in your learning? This is what they're saying. And so the teachers are getting this information individually. But then every week, I compile a spreadsheet without teacher names that, that shows how we have, how soon have we responded with those? It summarizes what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, and kind of what the game plan is going to be. And then when we're meeting at grade level planning meetings, we're also going back to that and saying, so what's the next step? What are you thinking? What are you thinking? And that's how it becomes, that's how it lives. It lives every day, all year. It's just like how we spiral in the classroom. I say, you know, I spiral every day, every minute of every day. I, I sometimes have to step back and, and number one, remind myself of the progress that we made. And I have this image in my head of this, of this chart that we've used for several years now, showing every single year. Every single year, over the last seven years, we have made steady progress in our comparative student achievement gains. And, and so, well, yes, there are going to be setbacks. And that's okay. And that's okay. But as long as we are, as we are reflecting on those and also we don't get too down on ourselves when we get in a hole. And one of our things we, we've talked about now for a couple of years is one of my favorite phrases, we talk about how we need to get the students to trip over their success. We need to get them to see frequent and small wins so that they can build on that. Which what we're really talking about is mastery experiences. And as a leader, it's my job to make sure that, that I am making visible the mastery experiences that I'm seeing in the teachers and that we're seeing across the board and that we're seeing in the students so that we can use those to fuel us forward even when sometimes we were faced with setbacks. Okay, so simple steps for new leaders who are really wanting to dive into instruction would be, don't do too much all at once. Like when we've started with visible, visible learning, we started with step one. We want our students, our goal is that, actually, step one was, we will be able to effectively write a learning intention and success right here. We spent a year on that. So just, just take it step by step and keep the data, and keep following the data, and don't move forward until you've mastered and you're ready and you continue then spiraling, but you can't do too much at once. You've got to, you've got to narrow it down and then capitalize on those successes and build over time. If I could talk to Anne Marie seven years ago, I would tell her, I would tell her that the confidence is going to come. Because I had a really bad, bad case of imposter syndrome starting out. I was only an assistant principal for two years. And I didn't intend, it just, the opportunity came and I wanted to take on the challenge. But I so many times felt like I wasn't good enough, felt like I wasn't qualified, felt like, you know, should I even, am I even have the capability to do this? I would have told that Anne Marie back then, keep your head held high and, and dig in and build the credibility with the people because that doesn't come overnight. It is going to be a journey and it's going to take time. But you can do it, girl. You can do it just day after day. Oh, thank you.
I would also be remiss if I did not say that all of the credit for that video goes to Ms. Heingardner and to Mr. Share. They worked very hard on that video with Anne Marie and her staff. And they did a lot of hard work on that. Any questions?
I just got a comment. I was blessed. She worked at the Northern End when my kids were in school. Dr. Noonan, you're knocking it out of the park. Keep up the great work. Last year, I was invited to their eighth grade graduation and to see the academic data of those kids that were moving on to Stonewall Jackson was unreal. And on my way out of the school, I made it a point to stop and talk to some of the staff. And the message was the same from every person I spoke to. They feel highly supported. She does a great job. There were new teachers there that came to us from other teaching facilities that had heard what a great job she was doing. And they wanted to come to that school because of the culture and the atmosphere. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
I was kind of triggered by this. I, I, it was a, it says something about me. I found that kind of exciting. Sorry, I didn't make it that way. But it's, the, I think what's really cool is I've been thinking lately about how we can transition more from just wrote SOL type stuff into something that's more, everybody, or at least not everybody, but a lot of conservative type educators are interested in increasing and improving critical thinking skills. Well, you can't make that in one leap. And the more we have just simple Socratic dialogue with the students and measure, and then after a while, it would be a two-step discussion and then a three, then you're on the road to that kind of critical thinking because you're actually like an athlete you're training in. And I, I think that's really neat. So I think there's a, there's a lot of gold to be mined at the end of that tunnel. I really think there is. And so even though it does seem pedantic to just to kind of have those simple questions, I do think that that interchange with the students, as long as it doesn't get to be cookbookish or forced or whatever, is, is really a pathway to, to coming up with good critical thinking skills and better learning. So, so thanks. That was really exciting, really was. So thank you. Appreciate it. Everybody else?
I'm just going to go along and talk to you along with what Mr. Ricker said. I'm going to say the same thing. I appreciate everything you do, everything you're doing down there. And the atmosphere, like you said, I really do appreciate it. You're doing a great job. Keep up the great work.
If I can just add on a little bit, just in case you're not here towards the end, because I wanted to talk about this a little bit later on, but I did want to commend you on, we did have the, what's this called? The School Performance and Support Framework. And I know you guys placed top when it came to performing chronic absenteeism, which is a great achievement. And I, you know, kudos to you guys and the work that you're doing. Obviously, the kids want to come, so that's, that's always good. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Jen?
Mr. Chairman. Come over here, I guess. Hello? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd. It's my pleasure tonight to share a brief overview of our comprehensive, long-range plan. We do this consistently every year to monitor. This plan was developed and implemented back in 19, or in 2022, and will run through 2027. So obviously, we are going to be coming together to create a new plan moving forward. So within the next year, we will be collecting a committee together, which will be representative of some of the board members too, to create a new plan. You'll notice in your document, I'm not going to go through the entire document with everyone here, but this plan was developed. The basis of it gives the administration within the division, the school board members, the school, the mission, vision, and beliefs of the school. And then it gives a brief overview of the curriculum from elementary, middle school, and then special needs, whether it's disabilities or whether it's students that need remedial. and then special needs, whether it's disabilities or whether it's students that need remedial, uh, skills covered. It also has our literacy plan, an overview of our literacy plan in it. And then the school board goals, which I have a slide of. And this is what the plan is really made out of. So out of the five areas, the academic achievement and growth, positive school climate and culture, family engagement and community connections, recruit support, retain enthusiastic professionals. And then lastly, highly qual, um, high quality and adequate facilities and learning environments. So when we go to look at that, we have to understand when we look at data, data has context. So it could be the sampling size of it. So obviously, if you, and we get into some of it, like you'll look and you'll see that you'll say, well, why did certain things happen and grow so much? And there's always a story behind data, so just keep that in mind. On the first slide, goal one, the academic achievement, for the most part, we are remaining consistent. Um, academically, we're doing very well, um, within our region. And you'll hear about that later coming up at some point of how we are doing well within our division with other divisions. The things that we look at in academic achievement is the graduation rate, college readiness, accreditation report, and then obviously the achievement in the core areas. One thing that you'll notice on the college readiness, you'll see the SAT college readiness benchmark for reading and writing. You'll notice a drop there in that. But one thing that we know is that we have less students taking that prep test now than what we have in the past because not all colleges require it. So the sampling size is not the same either, and you don't always get all of your students taking it. The second was goal two, is the positive school climate and culture. You'll see this bases around discipline attendance and climate surveys that we do. Something that's important to look at, if you look at discipline, and that's a perfect example, we talk about numbers change. If you look back to COVID where it was very low, and then it started climbing from 22 to 24, 25, and say, oh wow, they have a lot more discipline issues. There must be a lot more things going on. Well, that comes in contact, context. We have made it very clear with our principals, work with principals, be very thorough with our discipline and making sure that we're documenting everything. So that number looks different because of some practices that we've put in place and things that we're doing, because we have an emphasis on discipline too, because we wanna have good behaviors. If you see DNA, that just means that we do, D-N-Y-A, we don't have that data yet. Uh, it's not available, it hasn't been posted. But you can see across the board, we're maintaining, we're doing better. Goal three, family engagement, community connections. You can see that we had 134, uh, community outreaches this year, past year, which is really great. That was up from the previous year. It went down a little bit, so our schools work hard with that. And we also have Kevin back here that does a lot of things too, and makes sure it gets out to the community also. You'll notice that there's two gray areas. That's when they, we don't give this, uh, survey every year. It skips, so that's the reason for the split in the data. And then our preschool was remaining consistent. And we have a little bit more, a number of preschoolers last, last year on the waiting list than previous year. Recruiting teachers and retaining our professionals. You'll see that we do surveys and staff reports, and we do exit, um, surveys, so, or reports. So Linda Hodges will meet with teachers as they leave and ask them, why are you leaving? If you notice, there is a huge increase in the retirement. And you can see that within even our school board office staff, that there is a lot of people that retired out of the school board office staff. So you can see where that's went up. But for the most part, we've remained consistent. And then the last one is the high quality and adequate facilities. Our utilization, utilization percentage is still around 80%. Um, so our buildings are, that's, that's a lot of utilization in our buildings. When you get to 80, that means pretty much when you walk in, we're using all of our spaces. And then you can see it's the student-teacher ratios, they have not been reported yet. But it's kind of deceiving when you put the student-teacher ratios, this is straight off the website. So if you walk into our classrooms, you walk into a K-7 classroom, there's not gonna be just 11 kids sitting in a classroom. That takes some other staff members that are, that are on staff too that combines into that number, and that's what drives that number lower. So it's a little deceiving when you look at that, because when you go into classrooms, there's very few classrooms that have 11 and, or 14. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it was a brief overview, but it's just a follow-up. This is what we call lag data. It's data that happens afterwards that we look at, and we take into context when we move forward. Jennifer and her staff, they look at a lot of data that is in time, that, as they move throughout the year too, but they also look at data also that are lag data. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, informational agenda. Uh, Dr. Shepherd, um, we are gonna discuss the library book list purchase list, or?
Just the stipulation IIBP dash R, establishes procedures for the selection of library books. The, um, library book lists were placed on the website on Wednesday, November the 19th. They are presented for information at tonight's meeting and will be requested for approval on the consent agenda at the January 8th, 2026 meeting.
And I appreciate these being posted so that people can actually get in there and take a look. And so even if they decide to take no action, they know it's there, they can go look for it and search it out. So thank you for posting those.
You're welcome.
Now, we had, uh, two, uh, two topics brought up by Mrs. Carlinio. Now, Dr. Shepherd, um, are you gonna give us any background, or should I just go to Gloria and have her talk about what, what her, her concept is?
Mrs. Carlinio would be great.
Okay. So first of all, Gloria, let's take, uh, let's take, we know this, 5.2 is the, uh, the 2025th anniversary of America. So why don't you tell us what, uh, what you're contemplating?
Thank you, Dan. Um, so yes, this is a resolution that we, um, have, um, that I went ahead and introduced uh, for action in January, um, because I wanted to see if we can go ahead and have this done at the beginning of the year. Because the idea is, you know, we're gonna be celebrating the 250th anniversary of our country this next year. And, uh, we wanted to make sure that we invited a lot, you know, all our teachers and our students to have more programming that will hopefully will be, um, informing the students about our history. We want our kids to be proud of our history, to know our history. And, um, this is gonna be the perfect year. I know there's gonna be a lot of things going on all around the nation, and we wanna be a part of that. So we wanna encourage our teachers to come up with, uh, creative ways that we can actually, um, celebrate this while at the same time teaching our, our students. So one of the things that we had, um, uh, thought about was also having like a week that we can, um, make celebrations, um, for this. And I think we did put one in there, didn't we, towards the end? Did we choose that or no?
No, you and I chatted about it the other day, and I think it was gonna be close to the last.
To the last, yeah. So, uh, so we'll be talking about that, I guess, in, in January. Um, so, I mean, we do want the teachers to have, throughout the year, to have activities and, and maybe read books, um, learn songs, all that kind of stuff. But also have a distributed time towards the end of the year. Hopefully a time that is not gonna, um, be, uh, getting in the way of testings or anything like that, that we can actually celebrate this district and have more activities. So that'll be for vote in, um, January. And I, I should say also, at this point, it's a resolution because it's gonna be very specific towards the 250th anniversary. But we're also gonna be looking, I hope, um, throughout the next year, um, to do a few more things that I'll talk about during the board member comments.
Any questions or discussion for Gloria on that topic? I'd love to, um, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to, um, suggest that a resolution kind of, is kind of not very action-oriented, you know, they get lost sometimes. Um, but, um, what I, I, I think that the board should think of ideas that could be part of this, uh, if you will, celebration package. Because I do think, uh, it would be a shame for those of us who lived through, um, 1776, 1976, uh, by some type, it was, it was pretty powerful stuff. And I'd like to see that, uh, that our school system, uh, really kind of focuses on that and with various kind of celebratory things. So I'm sure not just Gloria, but others on the, on the board could probably work with the superintendent and coming up with various activities that would be kind of planned down the road. So I, I think it would be really good to see that when it comes to tradition. And then the second one is 5.3, uh, and it's, uh, I think it much has to do with Chromebooks, does it not? So turn it over to you, Gloria.
Yeah, so, uh, this is a resolution, um, of Shindig County School Board, encouraging balanced instruction through reduced screen use. And at this point, is this is a resolution where we're already working. Um, and I don't know how that would look in the future, if this is gonna be policy or if this is something that we just work, uh, together with, uh, the superintendent. But the idea here is, um, we have a lot of data regarding how bad electronic and digital use has been for education, not just in our district, but all around the nation. Not only in terms of what the kids are learning or not learning, rather, um, but also in terms of the mental health and, and all the, the different aspects of it that have just adversely affected our children, um, all over the nation. So the idea here was to have this resolution, um, it's gonna be, in part is including the Chromebooks, but overall just to reduce the excessive screen time. We already did the, the cell phone ban, which, um, has been incredibly, um, successful in terms of helping our students, and we hear from the students, uh, mental health task force and how grateful they are for that. Uh, and I know other schools are also adopting that. But now the idea is coming of even the Chromebooks, especially for elementary school, uh, but I would even suggest middle school. Um, this is something that, uh, few of, a lot of schools are talking about, uh, school districts, not enough of them are still acting. I think everybody's kinda waiting to see who's gonna act first. Uh, I know some schools, uh, I did use, uh, Burke County, uh, from North Carolina. Uh, I used some of their ideas when I drafted this resolution, because they've already banned the Chromebooks. Now, they did it mostly for cost issues. They thought it was becoming cost prohibitive and it just wasn't worth it. But they also used a lot of the, um, data that we have showing how it is affecting the learning of our, of our students. So that's what this resolution is about. Uh, we'll be voting on it in January, hopefully. And then my idea was that from here, we're gonna be working on specifically, you know, how, if we're gonna be looking at this getting rid of Chromebooks for elementary school, how is that gonna look? How are we gonna face it out? You know, is it gonna be year by year? Is it gonna be all at once? And we're gonna go to the middle schools and, you know, we're gonna have computer labs the way we used to have it, uh, so that the students are still learning about, um, you know, how to use computers for their SOLs and all that. Uh, I'm not very concerned. I know children know about electronics more than we do. I mean, you can give a two-year-old a phone and they probably know how to use it better than I do. So, um, so I think if this, in this day and age, the students really know how to use the electronic part of it, it's the pen and pens, the, the pen and paper part of it, um, writing out, uh, knowing how to write things out, even cursive, you know, this is part of that. Uh, reading, reading actual books as opposed to just having a computer read the book to them. So these are all skills that I'm hoping we can build on. Because once we build that in, in terms of the elementary and middle school, it's, we're gonna see that in high school. We're gonna see how much better they're gonna do in high school as well, and for the rest of their lives as well. So, um, so I'm hoping that our members will consider this and that from here we'll be able to go into actual policy and, um, and change this to our system. If you have some questions?
Comments?
I just wanna thank you for heading that up. The number of parents that reach out on a regular basis and are concerned about how much their kids on Chromebooks as opposed to teacher-student interaction is amazing. Um, great thoughts, I like it, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I forgot also to mention, there's also the problem of the privacy concerns that we have with the Chromebooks and all that. Um, so it's not just the learning and the mental health, but we also have a lot of privacy concerns with, with regards to how these companies are bad harvesting, you know, our kids' data. Um, and also the fact that our kids, going back to how good they are with using computers, they can get over these firewalls that we have all the time. And, and we know they're watching things they probably shouldn't be watching. Not all of them, but I'm just saying, some of them can, um, and doing stuff that they shouldn't be. So I, I just don't think it has, they have a place in elementary school for sure.
Anybody else on that one? I, um, I have a feeling that probably would be, uh, something that would be at least regulatory and perhaps even worthy of policy. But, uh, so I would encourage anybody on the board to be thinking about wither Chromebooks over the next month or so, so we have at least, uh, uh, a set of alternatives that we think are viable, so. All right. So there's some, we're gonna move into, uh, action items, so the first one, 6.1, is, um, to approve the personnel actions that were, um, I guess briefly, before I came to the closed session this evening. So, um, uh, is there a, a motion to approve the personnel list as it was presented to the five of you?
I move to, uh, approve the personnel list as it was presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker, a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Carlinio. Uh, all in favor of approving the personnel list, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? The revised program of studies for high school. Is there any discussion? Now, I, um, I went through and looked at these and, and saw that, so I, I, I wasn't, uh, I was recovering, I guess, the last meeting when this was, when this was discussed, so. Um, is, is there any discussion on this before we consider to, uh, to accept a motion on approving these revisions for the high school program? Y'all saw and like what you saw and you're ready to roll? Okay. In that case, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the revisions for the high school program of studies as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker, a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Street. Any discussion? No discussion? Uh, those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, uh, done opposed? So it passes? And, uh, the final action item is, um, request to increase the fiscal year 2026 special budget.
I move to approve the request to increase the fiscal year 2026 special budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker, for that motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Carlinio. Any discussion? Those in favor of, uh, approving the request to increase the budget, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Dr. Shepherd, any reports?
Thank you. This week, we were informed by, um, of our 2025, 2026 accreditation and accountability. And all of our high schools are fully, or all of our schools are fully accredited. Um, all three of our high schools have been name distinguished. All three of our middle schools are on track. One elementary school was off track and two elementary schools are, need support. Of the three high schools that, um, of our three high schools that are name distinguished, um, all three of them are in the top 10% of schools in Virginia, with Schlesberg High School ranking 20th out of 1,840 schools. So they're in the top 1%. Stonewall Jackson is 41st out of 1,840 schools. So they're in the top 2.5%. And then Central High School is 168th, and that, so they're in the top 10%. And we're so, so across the division, we're very proud of our teachers and our students and our parents, um, for this great achievement. So, um, we couldn't do it without our students and our staff.
Maybe I should take, take a placard to court tomorrow and hold that up. I'd like to get something across, anyway.
So, um, also, good luck to Schlesberg Football Team as they travel Salem on Saturday to play Glumbar at 11:30 in the Class Two State Championship. I hope to see you there. Also, congratulations to Triplet Tech's criminal justice student, Sophia Dotson, on placing first in the recent Skills USA competition held at Mount Jackson Rescue and Fire. Sophia beat out 15 other competitors in the traffic stop scenario and will now advance to the state competition, state competition. Um, I have enjoyed the performances over the last couple of weeks. December 17th. December is always a busy time for our music departments and this year's no different. They've been participating in the tree lighting ceremonies, parades, and hosting concerts in their schools. And we've had some amazing performances and guess what, there's still another week of performances next week, so I hope to see you there. Triplet Tech had a career fair and with 46 businesses, many of them local in attendance, at the Crew Building in Mount Jackson. It was a great opportunity for our Triplet students to talk directly to business professionals and also for our business professionals to get to know our students. So great, great, exciting opportunity for Triplet Tech. We also have 24 students who are going to be in the district, the county spelling bee, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, so looking forward to that, January the 23rd. And then also, Mr. Street, Chairman Barlow, Assistant Superintendent Chad Hensley honored Mr. Dorman and they finally hung the Dorman's Corner plaque, which was hung in the Stonewall Jackson High School hallway to commemorate Principal Mike Dorman. So that was great and there were several staff members present for that commemoration. And then we also had a great discussion with our elected officials in November and talked about the needs of the school divisions. Page County, Clark County, Rockingham County, and Shenandoah County were all represented. And then last but not least, I would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season, which is coming up, and I hope everyone's able to enjoy the holiday and find time to relax and rejuvenate with family and friends. Happy to answer any questions.
Not surprisingly, I don't hear any.
Thank you.
School Board member comments? Who wants to kick off? Mike?
I have something.
Hey Gloria.
And I wrote a damn song, make sure I don't, I didn't get it wrong, but as we've been talking today, we've just received what Dr. Shepherd was just talking about, which is a school performance and support framework from the Virginia Department of Education. And this is a report that is based on the SOL results, but also a lot of other criteria such as absenteeism, readiness, college enrollment, employment, military enlistment, among others. And the results were nothing short of amazing, as two of our high schools, Strasburg High School received the top school by total points and Stonewall Jackson High School followed closely in fifth place. And this is particularly remarkable because when we consider who we're competing against in our region. So our region is Region Four and it pretty much includes all of Northern Virginia. So it includes Fairfax County, Loudoun, Arlington, Frederick Counties, I mean, everybody around is, is in that category. And for the middle school, Peter Bülleberg Middle School was also recognized for being in the top for growth in math. And North Fork Middle School was for success against chronic absenteeism, like I just said. But I wanted to talk about this and I didn't want to steal the thunder because I know the school is going to be talking about this, but I didn't want to have to wait until January to do this. Because too often, a lot of people get distracted by the big issues that, that people are talking about or the media's covering. And, you know, those are issues that generate a lot more media attention than some of the other stuff that we're doing here and most specifically that what you guys are doing here in the school board. And this is a fantastic accomplishment. I specifically wanted to congratulate Mrs. Foltz, Mrs. Foltz before he left, for her and her staff at Strasburg High School for this amazing, amazing achievement. And if you think about it, they're even ahead, they're number one. Number two is Churchill Ro, no, sorry, Heather Rowan, number two is Lower High, High School. And then number three is Thomas Jefferson High for science and technology. Number four is Clark County High and number five is Stonewall Jackson. I mean, Thomas Jefferson High School is, has been number one for years nationwide. I mean, this is one of the best schools in the nation and Strasburg actually was ahead of them. So I have a little trepidation because at the same time, I'm afraid that more people are going to start moving here, not just for the beautiful views, but for our great schools. But regardless, we're going to still get a congratulation and also want to congratulate Stonewall Jackson and I know Mr. Lawrence is not the principal, but I think we need to give Mr. Dorman the respect here because even though he's retired, it was under his leadership that a lot of this came to, to be. So also, I just want to talk a little more about the resolutions, I already can't say what they were about, but I did want to add to what Mr. Barlow was saying because I, I am looking to see if we can actually also have a more patriotic curriculum in our schools and what that would look like from K to 12, even in elementary school, even if it's just teaching our kids basic songs that unfortunately too many kids nowadays don't know anymore. You know, picture songs, I'm ready to be beautiful, you know, obviously, or anything. Make it fun and have it as part of not just the 250th anniversary, but also have it as part of our curriculum that we can have to show our kids, you know, teach them about our history and why they need to be proud of our country. And finally, I wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Looking forward to the next year and hopefully we can actually work on a lot of this stuff. I want to wish Mr. Barlow and Mr. Gutsho good luck, thank you for being here and good luck, I guess we're going to be seeing you across the table next year, but hopefully now that you know how things are going here, you'll be able to help us out a little bit.
Thank you Gloria. Next?
Well, let me just follow up on that. We all know that leadership is a foundation built on planks. Planks, and this is not a definitive list, but planks such as vision, vision, integrity, reason, judgment, gentle of speech, wealth of mind, and invoking a well-used poetic license, constant to purpose. And Shenandoah County has certainly been blessed, Mr. Chairman, by your presence as a member and as, as chairman. It's been a blessing for me personally and I've been here 14 months and I've learned so much. And Shenandoah County thanks you for your service and for your leadership and God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Further, Mr. Gutsho, soon to be known as Mr. Supervisor. You'll soon be serving on the Board of Supervisors for at least the next four years. And being a student of government, well, I might as well give away my age since Kennedy, Nixon, whatever year that was. Few words of advice. Dance, dance with who brung you, swing with who swung you. Life's not a 40-yard dash. In the long run, you'll have more fun if you dance with the one who brung you to the bash. Translation, which all of us in this room know, but there might be some folks still listening in cyberland, so stay tuned, folks at home. Kyle, stay loyal and true to the people who put you there, to the principles that helped you to get elected. Do not abandon your roots and your good judgment. Do not forsake commitment for some quick but fleeting opportunity. It will only result in the last loss of loyalty of the people who voted for you. They are your base. Good luck, Mr. Gutsho, and have a successful first term.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank you both for serving on the board. Congratulations, Kyle, on moving on to the Board of Supervisors. When Brandy wrote me into running for school board and told me, oh, it's only one meeting a month, that, that was a big fallacy, but you guys haven't served for four years. Thank you for your time and your commitment. I've come to respect how much time is involved in serving on the board. And I pray God blesses you both in your future endeavors. Tagging on to what Gloria was saying about Strasburg High School, I did not realize that we beat out Thomas Jefferson. Not going to give away my age, but I graduated Fairfax County's public schools many years ago and Thomas Jefferson was always revered. They always had a long waiting list of kids trying to get into that school. So for a little, little county like ours, beating them out, that's a pretty big accomplishment, pretty huge accomplishment. So kudos to Mrs. Foltz and her staff. Other than that, I would like to wish all our staff and all of our students and families a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you to all our staff and everything you guys do. I hope you find some time to relax and rejuvenate over the two-week break. That's all I've got. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I guess first of all, well, Mr. Bowman, another quiet mic for you.
Very good.
Yes, isn't that great?
Merry Christmas.
Guess he appreciates the gift there, huh?
There you go.
Thank you there, Coach Cupid, for holding in. I'm going to tell Mr. Steve Heisman, you, you filled in and held the fort there for staying here. Thank you. Congratulations to three high schools for the accomplishments there academically. Great job. Congratulations to Stonewall Jackson, we heard earlier, to Stonewall Jackson Cross Country team by Coach Clannahan for what they've accomplished and that is pretty neat. The, the average team GPA was a 3.7. That's pretty neat. Good job. And of course, moving on to sports, as you can see, it might be a little difficult, but I wore purple. So hey, good luck to Strasburg Saturday. I kind of, I guess I kind of, in my mind, I'm thinking of the movie Under Siege, I think it kind of was, that statement was, well, they're gone if you can't beat them, then you might as well join them. So hopefully the car will start Saturday and we'll head south. Looking forward to that. So anyway, good luck and hopefully come back with a big trophy. Moving on, thank you, Kyle, Mr. Gutsho, for everything you've done, your service and time and along with what Mr. Rickert's statement there, it's a lot of, a lot of time people don't understand. So thank you so much for your service and looking forward to communicating with you in the future when you're on the other level. So anyway, thank you. Colonel Barlow, I, I kind of go along with what Mr. LV says there, it's been an honor, a great opportunity to work with you, to sit back and watch and, and take everything in and, and how you speak and your views and, and we thank you for your, for everything you've done, not only here for Shenandoah County, but your country. And so I definitely want to thank you for the time that you've served, the times, what you've done for this county, this school system and, and your interest and, and I still, still looking forward to, I know I, I've been telling you, but I'm still looking forward to that opportunity. I want to sit down, I want to hear your, your life experience. That sounds very neat. And, and I'm, I'm sure we need some substitute teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, I wouldn't lie.
But anyway, thank you very much, Colonel Barlow, appreciate everything you've done and outstanding job and your service and leadership.
Thank you, Tom.
Along with that, I guess after the first year, we'll welcome two members, Mrs. Pence and Mr. Shibe, so looking forward to working with you two and the interest that, the interest that you've all shown in the past and so I know it's going to be a pleasure working with you all in, in the future. Want to thank the whole staff, here and not here, for everything you do and for the accomplishments of Shenandoah County Public Schools. And along with that, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And I know it's been inflation, so there's, don't need to go above $30 for my Christmas gift.
All right.
Thank you.
Of course, tonight's one of the rare nights where I've had a cold. I think this is the second meeting out of about 100 where I haven't felt all that great, but obviously, tonight is the final night and I'm trying not to get emotional. I don't typically write down, give me a second, sorry.
I hate to throw things out of sequence, but would you hate to go or?
No, I don't have time.
All right, let's go ahead.
So yeah, it's been a, it's been a long four years because I expected to work hard. I didn't expect to work this hard. But it was, for me, it's been like running or writing, which is, I really hate to do those things, but I love having done them. And so the call to do those are, those three things, especially the school board has been really edifying to me and staying close to the kids. I haven't stayed as close as I'd like to because I didn't realize how much stuff we'd be doing at the, at the staff level and so forth. I should have, should have figured that out. Nevertheless, we're, we're close to that young, vibrant thing we call youth in America and it's so good to see. When I came in, I think one of the first things I said was that I'd noticed a lot of academic measures going down and that our school board at the time didn't seem to be concerned. And I said I wanted to be on here long enough to help turn the ship around. And I thought that sounded pretty, what's the word, egotistical. I didn't say I want to turn the ship around, but I did want to see the ship turned around. And after a couple of years, we started to achieve results, I don't mean we, I mean we, saw results. One of my many detractors called me up and said, now, Barlow, I don't want you taking credit for any of this. And I said, I said, thank you for telling me that, but you don't have to worry about that, this, this isn't my doing. But it, but it is, in a way, we all know that, you know, Bible says, you know, where there is no vision, the people perish. And if we don't have that vision, then we do indeed, as the people perish and we're not too far away from that. So I'm proud that I think the ship has, has turned. So I won't say anything more about what I've done other than to say I, I'm proud of what this organization, Shenandoah County Public Schools, has done and I'm honored to have been part of it. I want to call out a few people that have been especially important in, in my efforts here. One is the cohort I came in with, with Brandy and with Kyle. Brandy, if you're out there somewhere, I, I love her, I'll call it earthly Christianity. I mean, it, it's earthy, it's very down-to-earth and I found that really a wonderful thing about her. And she's one of those rare people that every time I talk, talk to her, I got smarter. She, she, she made me smart about a lot of things and just by opening her, right, as a matter of fact, I think she's the first person, one of our very first meetings, talked about the Chromebooks and it was like, ah, you don't want to see that here, but she did and she, she had a lot of, a lot of, a lot of gumption and still has it, I'm sure, but thanks to her. Kyle came on board as, you know, this young, sorry, kid, didn't have any real life skills and maturity, whatever. Right now, I look back and you've shown quite a bit more maturity than some of the others of us, such as, including myself, calmness, which should never be mistaken for indifference with this guy. It's not indifference, it's that he's contemplating, he's thinking and he's, he's working it out, he's logical. And he's, he is diplomatic and statesman like that, why I appreciate that about him. And as a wingman, he has really helped me quite a bit. He's not been overbearing, but just enough to take it back on track and do what you need to do and this is happening and I, I thank you. need to do, and this is happening, and I thank you for that. That was extremely helpful. Met LV more recently. His wit, his wisdom, his toughness, he carries a certain nobility, which I think is apparent as soon as you see him, but he really likes to get eyes on the target, on things that are going on, and his eyes-on, hands-on approach is a lot the way, like the way Tom handles things, too. Tom, if I had to pick somebody who's kind of the soul of the board, Tom has a lot of cachet with our students and parents, and gets involved with infrastructure, and just seems to have an antenna for things that are going on around the county that need, that need, and the school system that need attention. And we talked a lot on the phone, don't we? And I appreciate those discussions, so that's good. I'm really impressed with the central office staff, and the senior staff is so good when I moved in, and I don't have to, you know, the top three, you guys know who you are, but why not? What the heck? You know, Dave and Chad and Jen, you guys have been wonderful. What I've really enjoyed is the superintendent's selection of people to move up through the ranks, because the central office staff has just gotten better over those years, and I really appreciate that. The school board clerks, Cheryl, everybody knows is a national treasure. The way she deals things done administratively is a miracle. And Crystal is the kind, you can give you one look, a little squeeze on the arm, and you feel better about life. So thank you for being nurturing for somebody who needs that, that probably be me. But anyway, thank you, guys. I really appreciate that. I think the call-out to our future members is well done. I've gotten to know Whitney and Mike quite closely, and they're working almost as hard before on school board as when they're on the school board. And that's quite a, quite a, I hate to say this, but I think, I think it's going to be an upgrade after we leave.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah, anyway, but a couple of you guys, that's really, really great for that. So Mr. Bowman, you have kept us, you said it right. You've kind of educated us in a very quiet way, and it's been very effective, and you're a gracious gentleman, and I think that approach works most places, and it works here. So thank you so much for what you've, what you've brought to us. I don't have much more to say, except this. It's a tough situation where six of us are actually the employers of a superintendent, and that causes friction all across Virginia. And what I've seen is school boards that war with their superintendent and superintendents who are tyrants over their school boards. And what we have here is a marvelous ability to have this interrelationship between superintendent and school board members that really works. And I have to say, I think the key to that is Dr. Shepherd. Her work ethic, the example that she shows, her positivity, her imagination, her communication skills, and she makes tough decisions. I mean, she doesn't duck them. And I could go on and on, but everybody in this room has seen examples of her real leadership. And so while I would say we, we, you on the board need to maintain your oversight of that and never lose that, coordination with a person of that special set of talents is important, and I think, I'm pretty sure, as I go around, that the community understands that. So my hats off to you, Madam Superintendent, for superb job that you've done while I've been here. And I'm looking to see who I've forgotten, I don't want to go back and do all that. But anyway, so you better get ready. So I just want to finish, I'm a great believer in the philosopher Kierkegaard, and he is a great believer in irony, so I think I should ironically close with actually saying that one of the things that Gloria said at the end, I absolutely agree with, which is that a culture that does not teach its kids about its own importance and its own role in the world is a culture that's going to die. So if we do not inculcate the values of Western civilization in our schools, shame on us, and if we're scratching our heads, wondering why the kids have deserted us and are go searching for marks for answers, you know, we'll have ourselves to look at in the mirror. So I think including that kind of, you know, early on, whether it's folk songs or minor stories, or they need to have an idea of what American history, Western history really is, so that the first time they hear somebody selling something as stupid as Marxism, they're not going to bite on it, and they'll be smarter for it. So that's, I wish, and actually, I do hope to stay involved, so when you need some, I do something. Come to think of it, I'll be working all next week in the court, so I'm not done yet.
I have your number.
Okay, okay, Kyle, loving you.
All right. So I don't usually write down notes, but tonight I did, just so I can stay on track here. After being elected to the school board at 19 and taking office at 20, my goal from the beginning was to make a meaningful difference, and I hope I've been able to do that. I'm especially grateful to everyone in the school system who welcomed me and treated me with such respect from the very beginning. Coming in as a recent graduate with a unique perspective, it meant a lot to me that many of you were willing to work with me, listen to me, and take my ideas seriously. Your openness and support allowed me to contribute in a meaningful way, and I will always appreciate that. Over these four years, we have faced challenges and celebrated rewarding moments together. We've worked to raise standards, restore a stronger focus on discipline across our schools, which is, has fittingly been talked about a little bit tonight. Reinstate weekday religious education, adopt the library review, library book review policy, bring transparency and parental rights to the forefront, among other things. We've also raised pay and lowered insurance costs for our employees, important steps in supporting those who serve our students every day. Each accomplishment reflects our shared commitment to strengthening Shenandoah County Public Schools. I want to acknowledge the people that I began this journey with in 2021. I was elected alongside Mr. Barlow and Ms. Rutz. Brandy's dedication during her time on the board was meaningful, and I'm grateful for the service that we shared together. And Dennis, you have not only been our chairman, but a true partner in leadership. The guidance and friendship we built over these four years have meant a great deal to me, and I will always value the work that we've accomplished together. Also want to express my sincere appreciation to Dr. Shepherd. It's been an honor, absolute honor, to work with you. You've done a tremendous job leading our division, and I'm grateful for the professionalism, steadiness, and dedication you bring to every situation. Your calm, thoughtful leadership has helped guide this division through both challenges and successes, and as I've always respected the way that you keep students, families, students, or excuse me, students, families, staff, and our community at the center of every decision. I've learned a great deal working with you, and I'm grateful for the partnership that we've built over the last several years. Special, it's a bad night to have a bad threat, too, of course. It's fitting, right? Special thank you to all of our school board office staff, especially those in the room tonight. Obviously, I've worked with most of you, the closest, and your support and professionalism have meant so much to me. I truly appreciate everything you do, both publicly and behind the scenes, to keep our division moving forward. To everyone, I've had the privilege of serving alongside those who are still here and those who have moved on. Thank you. Your dedication, your perspectives, and your commitment to our students have made a lasting impact on me. And to the community, thank you for giving me the honor of serving. I will carry the lessons and memories from this experience with me for the rest of my life. I wish the new board the very best as they move forward, and I'm confident the great things will continue to occur for our students and our community. As I moved to the Board of Supervisors, I remain committed to supporting our schools in new ways, and I want to thank everyone in the room and involved for this remarkable chapter.
Well said. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Kyle. Second?
Second.
I heard Tom, Tom's the second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Moving, the meeting is adjourned. Tell me the time.
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen, he says. Okay, eight thirteen.